Great, welcome back everyone. Uh, we are continuing our regular meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight is March twenty-second. And uh, we have completed our closed session discussions and are reconvening our regular board meeting. Uh, we do not have anything to report out from our closed session. We will continue with our meeting and um, I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Robin Johnson, our student representative, will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move along with our agenda. We are, uh, and I, I am taking um, our president's uh, place here until he joins us or rejoins us and he will um, continue the rest of our meeting shortly. Uh, but until that time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, which is approval of the agenda. Uh, Dr. Senyard, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
Alright, uh, then I will send it uh, to the board for approval. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, student votes?
Aye.
A full board, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Uh, the agenda is approved. Moving on to number nine, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, are there any questions from the board? Uh, seeing none, I'll open it for public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Alright, seeing none, uh, we will bring it back for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a, a motion in a second. Um, student votes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, uh, any abstentions? Uh, motion, motion carried. Item number ten is comments from student representative, and I'll turn it over to you, Robin.
Thank you. The school reports for the March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting are as follows. Las Juntas' highlights from the week. LJE is so happy to have our hybrid students back on campus. We are so proud of all our students and families who adjusted to new schedules on March eleventh. Third grade is reading and writing about nonfiction topics, comparing two animals that they have studied the past few weeks. They are using research clubs to help collaborate on about the topics. Students are reading the California Young Reader Medal books sent out by Mrs. Yurik and will vote for their favorite book at the end of the week. Upcoming events: No school for spring break, April fifth through the ninth. John Mears' highlights from the week. We are back. Everyone was very excited to have students back on campus. We missed those smiling faces. Fourth grade released their trout on, if, on March seventeenth. They have now completed the full life cycle study. Third grade has been working on finding the area and perimeter of rectangles in math. Their reading unit is character studies, so they, so they have been thinking hard about the characters in the books. Students are enjoying the California Young Reader Book videos that our library tech Tracy Yurik made. They read two each week and will vote on their favorites. John Swet's highlights from the week. First graders are in the middle of their March Madness book reading with poor Louis as the early number one seed. Fifth graders celebrated Pie Day on March fourteenth, with some students even making homemade pies from scratch. PTA hosted a festive, fun-filled virtual movie night. Upcoming events: Fourth graders are preparing for their virtual Gold Rush trip to Coloma. Staff is continuing professional development with the new science standards. Morello Park's highlights from the week. MPE is so excited to have students back on campus. We are so proud of all our students for how they transitioned to our new AM/PM schedules. Second grade is currently working on geometric shapes and math. In writing, we are working on informational reports. Second graders are diving into character work through Reader's Workshop. Fourth grade is embarking on their much anticipated Gold Rush unit. Students will start their own Gold Rush trip next week in their journals. Fifth grade is finishing up writing and publishing magazine articles on topics they researched. They worked hard on making their articles come to life by adding text features like captions and photos, glossaries, sidebars, and more. Fifth graders are also taking part in an American Revolutionary War simulation, where each group of students has to make different decisions that the real colonial army faced and see if they will be able to defeat the powerful British Army and gain their independence. Martinez Junior High's highlights from the week. Last week marked our third week of MJHS March Merriman. Over the last two weeks, our Bullpups joint sessions including Virtual Escape Room, Origami Club, Karaoke Club, and virtual tours of the City of Lights, Paris and Ireland on St. Patrick's Day. Bullpup families responded, and as a result, our hybrid learners will be in class on campus in the morning, and our distance learners will be continuing online in afternoon virtual sessions. Communications continue, so please check your inbox for important info. Upcoming events: March twenty-fifth at six PM, informational night for returning to school, hybrid families via Zoom. March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, teacher workdays, asynchronous school day. Check in with first period from eight to eight fifteen. March twenty-ninth and thirtieth, welcome to MJHS, the sixth graders return. April first, welcome back to all six through eight hybrid learners. Alhambra High School's highlights from the week. Since the last school board meeting, we had a great incoming ninth grade packet handout, complete with cheerleaders and the out-of-towner band performance, as well as our hosting our virtual informational night for incoming students. It was a wonderful event with lots of energy within the virtual space. Thank you to all that attended. The Bulldog Cross Country Team finished their season last week, and Swimming and Diving will be finishing up next week. Up next, track and field, water polo, lacrosse, and soccer. The Alhambra Bulldogs returned to the football field last Friday, not, last Friday night at Knolls Field. Although they did not win the game, it was great to see our athletes, cheerleaders, and family member spectators. A big shout out to Contra Costa County Fire for stopping by to cheer on the dogs. We are one week out from welcoming our hybrid students back to campus. We will have a campus orientation for our current ninth graders returning in hybrid on Wednesday, March twenty-fourth. Upcoming events: Thursday, March twenty-fifth and Friday, the twenty-sixth are asynchronous instruction days that our teachers can prep for the reopening. Thursday, the twenty-fifth, rescheduled virtual site council meeting. Friday, March twenty-sixth, football at home versus St. Patrick's and St. Vincent's. Monday, March twenty-ninth, reopening date for hybrid students and implementation of the new bell schedule. Friday, April second, it's football at College Park. Monday, April fifth through Friday, April ninth, spring break, no school. Vicente Martinez, Brioni's Independent Study, Martinez Early Intervention Preschool Program and Summer Programs, highlights from the week. MEIPP started back in the hybrid model on Thursday, March eleventh. It is so nice to see our preschool students and staff back on campus. Go Pandas! Upcoming events: Vicente will host a WASC visiting committee Tuesday, March twenty-third for our mid-cycle accreditation visit. Vicente's staff is gearing up for reopening on Monday, March twenty-ninth. Martinez Adult Schools' highlights from the week. We started filming our welcome back video for our students, presented our internship proposal for students to help support small business in the community at the last Chamber of Commerce meeting, and meet with Warby Parker to discuss jobs, jobs and internships for optical program graduates. Upcoming events: Looking forward to welcoming back students to some in-person instruction the week of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. We have a new career class starting April twelfth for our ESL students, Intro to Business. And that concludes the school reports for the March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, item number eleven is the Employee Organization Reports. Uh, do we have any uh, reports from our labor partners? Brenda's, oh, Brenda, none for you, Stephanie? Okay, Brenda, go ahead.
I just wanna say what joy it is to have kids back on campus and I, you can just feel the whole mood is much lighter. It's happier, people are joyous, the kids are doing great. I'd like to also do a shout out to CSEA. You know, the custodians are coming through when we, we have the break between the classes, they're sanitizing everything. Our lunch ladies are providing lunch for every single student right now. Um, it's a total uh, group effort. We've got our aides supporting us. Um, it's wonderful to see all of that extra help. Everybody's kind of working as a team. And one last thing I'd like to note is, um, you know, the states across the United States have class sizes pretty comparable to what we have right now in hybrid. And it is amazing what you can get done when you only have half your class in the classroom. Being able to look at every single child, being able to actually have a conversation with every single child every day. I only wish that California funded education like the rest of the United States did, because we would be back, uh, because this would be our full class. And um, it, that, that part is really a positive for me, being able to really get to know my kids even more and to help them so individually at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. Um, on to item number twelve, which is comments from the PTA. Do we have any, uh, anyone here from PTA tonight? Alright, seeing none, uh, we will move on to item thirteen is, which is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence today?
We do. Um, and I, I wanna thank Helen Rossi for um, completing the district's budget overview for parents last December. Uh, this correspondence is basically just saying that um, the County Office of Education has approved our budget overview for parents. So, good job. Congratulations, Helen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is staff, board acknowledgements and announcements. And before I turn it over uh, to our superintendent, I will ask, are there any board members that have any announcements or acknowledgements that they'd like to share this evening? Courtney?
Thank you. Um, so I was, uh, I, I attended last Saturday, the Boys and Girls Club did a backpack stuffing uh, party and hand sanitizer kit. Um, socially distanced, a couple volunteers came and outside, we put together some backpacks and some hand sanitizer at the Martinez Campus downtown. And I just found out that this Friday at five, they're going to have a um, a little anti-racist library, uh, being funded by Rise Up Against Racism at the Boys and Girls Club, and so the inauguration, um, the ribbon cutting for that is Fri- this Friday at five at the Boys and Girls Club outside.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other board members have anything to share tonight?
I, I just wanna share some appreciation for our hardworking staffs. Um, I know as secondary gets ready to go back next week, they're working really hard for preparing their classrooms. And I've had the experience, I've, I've only been able to go to one campus where my son is, and um, I will say drop off and pickup have been really easy and really smooth, and I just really appreciate all the smiling faces every day. The staff is really enthusiastic. My son is basically jumping out of the car, like, ready to go, not even a little look back, and I think that's a huge testament to just the positive attitude of all of the um, hardworking folks at our elementary sites. So, thank you so much for that. It's been really positive so far.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, alright, if uh, there are no other, how about you, Robin, anything?
I just wanna say I'm looking forward to transitioning to this new schedule for everyone who's able to go on campus and for everyone who is taking the time to stay home as well. I think it'll be a good transition for everyone. I'm looking forward to it. And um, reminded everyone to continue to check your emails. There's a lot of information that is continuing to come out, so we need to make sure we're staying on top of that, so we're ready to go when it comes.
Great reminder, thank you for that. Oh, I see Jeremy's joining us. Um, how about this, Jeremy? I, so, I'll, I'll give you one more break. I will turn this over. We're on item fourteen point one, uh, on to school opening updates, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Senyard. And I'll pass the, I'll pass the gamble too. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Dave, do you mind throwing up the um, presentation, please?
Sure, I just actually wanna say that we are having a problem connecting Zoom for our interpretation, our interpreter, and so if people are looking for interpreter services, we're still trying to get it connected.
Okay, next slide, please. Um, I, I wanna thank everybody, kind of reiterate um, what Union President Liel has said. Thank you, everybody. Uh, reopening schools um, has been fantastic, and um, there is a definite change and feel uh, in the atmosphere. Uh, walking around with students on campus again, it's um, it's just fabulous. So, I wanted to, I don't know if anybody can read the, the signs here on the left, but one says bright forever and together. Um, and the other one is lucky to be back, and I gotta say, you know what, it's not the, it's not the students that are lucky to be back, we're lucky to have them back and, and get that sense of community again, um, going. And I know as we move towards the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, trying to get everybody squared away to be back on campus in the fall, and that's what we're, you know, keeping our fingers crossed and hoping everything is gonna work out the way we want it to, and the changing, um, the changing decrees by the state are coming fast and furiously, and uh, we're just, you know, trying to hang on and, and go for this ride. Uh, next slide, please. This is just another great little example of, of, you know, a welcoming classroom for our second graders at Las Juntas. And again, the reopening um, for our elementary and preschool students has been fabulous, and I appreciate everybody's hard work. Okay, just kind of logistics about what's, what's going on and, and what to expect upon return. Um, school definitely looks a little bit differently than we're all accustomed to. And so I wanna thank the students and the staff for following all the directions, following all the guidance. Uh, students have been doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. They're wearing their masks, they're washing their hands, they're using hand sanitizers, and uh, appreciate all the strategies uh, that our staff has implemented to make sure our kiddos are uh, feeling safe and, and being healthy. Um, I, I wanna acknowledge that um, our frontline screener app, you know, folks, thank you for hanging in there with us. I know this has been a challenge. Uh, we appreciate everybody's um, willingness to help us with the, the frontline screener. It's getting better by the day. We appreciate your support, and thank you for um, continuing to fill out your screener on a daily basis. Uh, I encourage folks to watch all the training videos that um, are coming home to you. Uh, if you have any questions, there's a lot of information on these training videos, please, you know, please feel free to re-watch those. Um, in terms of our family safety guiding, guidelines, just kind of want folks to remember, especially as we're getting closer and closer to um, spring breaks, please remind, please be mindful of following safety guidelines. Wear your masks if you are going to groups uh, with large, you know, large group gatherings, please wear your mask, please be sure to social distance. Um, if your child is not feeling well, please do not send him or her to school. Um, stay home, call us if you have questions. We have LVNs at our sites. We have nurses that are here to support you, um, if you have any questions that we can answer. Uh, but please, if your kiddo is not feeling well, do not send them to school. Um, so we just wanna, again, making sure that all our safety protocols are being followed. Next slide, please. Um, kind of what's, what's happening right now for the secondary schools? Uh, we are finalizing our schedule creation for the AM and PM sessions, and I wanna take a moment and uh, apologize to the community. I received a number of emails um, that stated that the initial um, letter that we sent out, the commitment letter was unclear, and folks um, were not clear that the schedules would change into an AM/PM. Uh, folks believed that the distance learning schedule was remaining the same. I apologize for that confusion in my mind. When we wrote that letter, I was trying to address that you would stay with your same teachers um, and not create a different course or different schooling for the distance learning people, and so I apologize for that, but I know I have some upset folks, and I just wanna address that. Um, we're dealing with current staffing challenges, um, trying to address any folks that, you know, cannot come back to campus because of extenuating circumstances and exemptions, and so we're addressing all of those, and we'll be ready uh, come Monday to uh, address any of those issues. Uh, we're notifying parents and students regarding their AM placements and uh, distance learning placements. Again, implementing all of our classroom safety procedures and uh, the, all the pathways are being marked. Um, we're ma- we're waiting for, as we get a little bit closer to next Monday, to put out all of our demarcations and stickers and all that fun stuff, so that's all gonna be out here in the next week. And kind of uh, reviewing all of our dismissal routines. Um, one of the, one of the, we've learned a great deal from reopening our elementaries prior to our secondaries. Uh, the dismissal routine is um, a little bit, it gets a little bit bottlenecked. Again, thank you, families, for all your patience, as we've, we've uh, tried to help them dismissal lines go quicker and quicker. Um, so at the secondary level, we'll definitely look at ways to stagger dismissal, uh, knowing that we have a number of students who will be picked up by, in cars by their families. Kids will be walking home or riding their bikes, so we will stagger the release times, and just so folks know, uh, in that respect as well. Uh, next slide, please. Um, one of the things I wanted to talk about, uh, received a number of questions, like what happens on campus if there is a positive, if a student or staff member tests positively for COVID nineteen, and I just wanna kind of go through these procedures really quickly, so folks know. Um, so there's a couple of things that can happen. Um, hopefully, please, when, if you or your child, um, somebody in your household uh, is positive for COVID nineteen, call the site administration immediately. Please call our main office so we can um, help work with you and, and make sure that we're doing our due diligence. So, uh, what's happening is if a student is testing positive or something along those lines, we will take the call, and then we'll talk to you about what quarantine looks like, and we, we kind of work backwards, what was the child or staff members last day on campus? And then we go through all of our contact tracing, so we're gonna ask, you know, a number of questions. Um, were you uh, near somebody for more than fifteen minutes in a distance of less than six feet? We ask you a series of questions, um, and we notify local public health. Um, we will notify site families regarding an infection. We'll let people know that there was a positive case on campus. Um, and unless you are notified of a close contact, um, continue on, please, we encourage you to get tested. Uh, you know, being mindful, and just, again, we are confident in our protocols in terms of spacing students appropriately and uh, following all our safety guidelines. Um, again, if something uh, more serious happens in terms of we have a number of students uh, testing positively, we're gonna work with local public health to see if other measures need to be taken. Um, and then we will work um, with the infected individual, the employee or the family, to determine when um, a student or close contacts may return to school or work. So we have, we have all our protocols in place, just wanna reassure families that um, while we are absolutely doing our best to, you know, obviously not have any exposure on campus, it may happen, and um, just rest assured that we know how to deal with it. So, um, next slide, please. And um, over the weekend, just wanna kind of give folks uh, an update. The state, like I said, is changing guidelines um, fast and furiously. Uh, on Friday, the C- uh, Center for Disease Control uh, recommended that with universal masking, students uh, should maintain a distance of at least three feet in classroom settings. So they have um, reduced the amount of uh, feet between students for uh, for classroom settings. Uh, and on Saturday, the California Department of Public Health also updated their guidance, um, basically saying that three feet um, uh, between students is, is safe. However, what has not been reduced is the uh, six feet of exposure uh, guidelines. So um, you know, we're processing this information. Uh, again, I know many folks wanna know what's happening next year as we get closer to um, the end of this school year, and folks want the guarantee that all students can come back to school next year. This is moving in the right direction. Uh, again, with this three feet of, of um, spacing, uh, we're gonna need to just go through our classrooms again and double check that we can put the majority of our students back in the three feet spacing. Um, so that is very good news. Again, uh, I, I kind of laugh when I'm, I'm saying that the state is literally changing guidelines daily. Um, in the last couple of days, we've received new information about um, graduation possibilities and information that's gonna start April first, uh, which is exciting news, and as we continue to open up our sports, our extracurricular activities, um, things are, are looking better and better. So this is all good news. Um, just again, so folks know, um, since outdoor sports have been opened, new guidance starting on April first talks about outdoor um, events. So we are going through kind of this new guidance with a fine-tooth comb to talk about our future promotion and graduation ceremonies, so exciting stuff um, to happen there. And uh, we're, we're, you know, very hopeful with the um, the delivering of vaccines and the case rates going down. We are keeping our fingers crossed for, you know, better things to come in the future. So, so all good news, all moving in the right direction. And uh, Dave, can you hit the last slide, please? Thank you, and, and can I answer any questions um, from the board at this time?
Thank you, Julie. Does, do any board members have any questions? Go ahead, Courtney.
I just wanna, thank you, Julie. Um, I just wanted to say that this is really good news, and I, I would really like to see us um, start right away, planning for the fall. I know that we don't have the guidance for that yet, but, you know, um, plan for the worst, hope for the best. We can start planning on what we know now. And I, I have heard that in San Ramon Valley Unified, they have a um, Return to School in the Fall Task Force that they've assembled, which seems like a really great idea, that, you know, if we put all stakeholders, teachers, um, CSEA members, parents, maybe some high school students, um, administrators. You know, let's, let's get moving now, so, 'cause we all know that it's, it's gonna take a little time. Thank you.
Any other board questions? Doesn't look like it will open up for public comment at this point in time. And remember, when I call on you, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. The first one is Amy Benz. Go ahead, Amy.
Good evening. Can you hear me? This is always so tricky.
Yes, yes.
I'm perfect. Um, good evening. Um, I'm a teacher in the district, and I wanna say thank you to everybody who's worked tirelessly, and it's late evenings, early mornings. Um, I feel really safe at school. I love seeing my first graders. I love seeing um, all the administrators and different people who've come through to check on us and make sure we're good, and my first graders loved uh, greeting them, so it's been a really positive um, opening of schools, at least um, for my experience at the first grade level and at Morello Park. Um, I'm uh, speaking to you this evening um, as a parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler, and I have concerns beyond the health and the protocols, and it's about grading and how things are going to be um, done for the kids who go back to school, because while they've been at home, um, they've had more time to take tests, uh, more opportunities to per- uh, possibly work together and use tools while they're home to help them be successful. And I'm hoping that um, that same experience extends to the kids who decided to go back to in-person learning, and that they have the same opportunities for those tools for learning, um, to helping each other, and for having more time on quizzes, so that things um, are more equitable amongst the kids that are at school and um, the kids who are home on distance learning, and that um, things are more fair that way. Um, so, and again, thank you, and I hope that this is part of the conversation. I know that safety and health is really important, but um, for the kids, that was a big part of their decision as to whether to go back or not. It wasn't necessarily their health, because they're kids, they think they're invincible. Their questions were about um, the equity and the time and the tools they'll be able to use the rest of the school year. So, thank you again for your time and thoughtfulness as we go forward.
Thank you, Amy. Up next will be McKenna Allen. McKenna? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, so hi, I am speaking to you as a parent with a child with some health problems. And I need to know that you guys are actually being followed by the guidance of the health department and not just the loudest parents. I also would like to know how many out of all these kids that you're, you know, praising to be back to school, how many of the minority children have joined the returning of the school? Like most of the ones that I'm talking to are not back at school. And that was kind of the pattern that I saw before, even with all that, you know, all the loud parents, there were no minorities with them. So I just want you to make sure that you guys are considering the other students who can be highly impacted by this virus. Also, when it comes to like doing the online schooling, I am going to, like, when it comes to like children who need, you know, P T O T, like those kinds of physical things. I personally am going to put them on hold until like the school figures itself out a little bit better. I was hurt in a car accident. So me doing his P T and his O T is just not going to be something that I could do without feeling super burdened or flaring up my back. And he already has a lot of physical issues that I have to do in addition to the fact of being hurt. And I just didn't think that the teachers were really trying to understand what that means when you are a parent and you have extra work when it comes to their health and everything else. So I just wanted to put that out there so that you guys can start maybe thinking about how are you going to maybe address some of these students? They're not doing that well anyways in the district, but it should be time to start thinking about how to be supportive with their services outside of school. Thank you.
Thank you, McKenna. Next up will be Tina Sherwin. Tina, go ahead.
Hi, this is Tina Sherwin. I'm a parent of a 10th grader. And at the last board meeting, I remember Courtney saying something, asking to get some statistics about the percent of students returning by school and the percent of teachers returning by school. And I did not see that as an agenda item. And I know the board member Courtney had requested that. So is that going to be something that's covered in this meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Next up is Jay Niemo. Go ahead.
Hi, that's Jen Niemata. I just had a few thoughts in light of the recent developments, the last few days. I would appreciate seeing a survey of all families, asking us if we are ready to go back now, full-time in person. Ask students staying in distance learning, why that was your choice? Was it due to logistical challenges? Or preference? From a psychological standpoint, I think it's better to ask us for feedback. When you don't ask, it suggests that you may not be interested in our answers. Please add a standing agenda item for the fall reopening. Work on several contingency plans ready to be implemented. Once we have enough information to act and start this now. It'd also like to see a summer school program offered to all grade levels. So any student who could benefit from catching up over the summer can do that. With the big news these last few days of revising the spacing guidelines, there was also some news about a restraining order that was issued against the 2021 reopening framework from January that applies to all public schools in California. Per this restraining order issued on March 17th in San Diego County Superior Court, the four to six minimum spacing rule cannot be enforced and all grades must have the same criteria for returning to in-person learning in the purple tier. This ruling, which will be revisited April 1st, will likely become permanent and Martinez Unified should be prepared for this. My question in light of this, in the new three foot spacing, is the current MOU the only thing that's preventing us from opening full-time now? MOUs aren't contracts, they're just agreements and can be nullified if they're more restrictive than the current guidelines and prevent districts from offering in-person instructive, instruction to the greatest extent possible. MOUs can't be used as an excuse to not return to the classroom. As the current MOU mandates six-foot spacing with no contingency for changing guidelines, then it must be thrown out. Even county health department guidelines for school reopening can differ from state guidelines, but they can't be more restrictive with regard to students attending full-time in person as soon as possible. The San Diego ruling states this, and this is just the first of many to come. May I suggest that some of our funding go toward hiring more teachers? So we have some staff dedicated to families that want distance learning and other staff available to teach full-time in person, five days a week to those students that need it and are ready to return. I respectfully request the board call a special meeting to discuss compliance with this restraining order as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this agenda item? Looks like we got one. Last call for a public comment on this agenda item? Okay, we have somebody named Deanna. Can you let us know who you are and go ahead?
Can you hear me?
There you go, Deanna.
There's two, there's two of us and I didn't know how to do that. So sorry. Where the, my, again, my name is Deanna and I'm a parent of an eighth grader who's right here with me. Would you like to say something? I'm sorry, I think he's not ready yet. I, I was listening to what Jen had just mentioned and I'd like, if possible, that we survey all the parents. Again, with a comment section and what, what we choose if we had a five full days as an option. As we've been speaking about this as parents and teachers throughout the community, community for the last couple of months. It, it, we chose this because we didn't have five full days. I've met only a handful of people that are choosing to do distance learning, which we have solved that issue and, and, and may they continue doing that with their health issues or, or whatever their personal reasons are, but the majority of the people, they chose distant learning and hybrid as I did because that's the only choices we had and we would absolutely pick five full days. So I would like to, someone to consider to resurvey. And I'm also sad to hear as, again, on the same subject, that a lot of people that want five full days have lost faith and hope in the Martinez School District, unfortunately. I teach here, I've been teaching for 35 years in Contra Costa. And it saddens me that so many people are leaving our city and, and school district because they, they don't have hope that we'll open five full days in the fall. And they have already moved or they're on waiting lists or they're considering it. And I just want to put that out there that please, please, is there something we could do to talk about five full days in fall? Thank you very much. You want to speak? Okay, here's my son, Timothy. Just talking about. Oh, here he is. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Timothy.
Sorry. I'm sorry. My name is Timmy. I'm in eighth grade. Distant learning has been really hard for me because all the time I'll be working on my Chromebook and my mouse will just stop working. My touchscreen will stop working. I can't connect to my classes. And it's not easy on me for what we're doing at the time. And a lot of my projects require me to be like in file circling and interacting. And it's really hard to do that lately. And he really, really likes his teachers, but he very much dislikes distance learning. It's, it's not working out good, but we do love our teachers. So thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you so much. And we, we do appreciate when our students come in and talk to us during, during our meetings. So thank you for, for speaking with us, Tim. Next up will be Jonathan Caddi, Caddi Yanaghi. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, Jeremy. You nailed it. Thank you so much.
I tried, I tried.
So it's going to be, if you don't mind, it's both me and my husband would like to speak. But I'll go first. My name is Donika Caddi Yanaghi and I'm a parent of two Los Angeles students. I've heard that now that the elementary school has been open to hybrid schedule, there's been a push to, from some parents to possibly fully reopen for the remainder of the school year. I'm requesting that our district does not consider a full return during the 2021 school year. Our students have had everything completely reshuffled on them. Some kids got a new school, some kids got a new teacher, some kids were thrown into a PM schedule and how to reorganize how they do their school day. We've asked so much from our kids and they've been incredibly resilient. It's almost April and we get out in May and we still have a week off for spring break. The year's almost done. I can't imagine having them change schedules and teachers again would be, that would be beneficial to the students, having to learn a new schedule and the expectations of a new teacher for possibly the third time this year is a lot to ask of our kids. Please don't make our kids have to deal with a change again so close to the end of the school year. Please stay the course through the end of this year and focus all of your efforts on a safe return in fall. Thank you guys so much for all you do. I know it's, it's a lot you guys are having to figure out and go through. And as Dr. Senyard's saying, it feels like everything's changing daily on you guys. So I do appreciate everything that you're doing. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jonathan, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Let's see, maybe we can do it all within the time. I just wanted to speak to the statistics. If as you make any of the decisions coming up, I think there's going to be a lot of pressure, pressure for a full return. You're going to see districts around us making shifts towards a full return. But as I've stated on some of my social media posts and maybe even at the meetings, not all districts, not all cities are created equal. If you look at the cases per 100,000, some of these districts that are going back to full return are two to four times better than, are doing two to four times better than we are in the cases per 100,000. Track on cchealth.org, the dashboards. If you look right now, there are 36 cases in Martinez in the last 14 days. And we know based on the announcements that went out to the parents at the elementary schools that two of those cases of the 36 are in our school district, attending our schools. And we don't know what the community spread is from these cases at this point, because one of them's very fresh. So please keep that in mind. Not all cities are created equal when considering those returns. And I know Martinez can do better. We can wear our masks. We can get our case numbers better, but we're just not quite there yet. Thank you.
And you were able to get it in within the three minutes. Thank you.
Is that both of them?
Up next will be Casey Farwell. Casey, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Casey Farwell. I'm a parent in the district. I'm speaking out to our board this evening to ask that you please address where we are going from here to bring our students back into the classroom to offer more in-person educational time. Now that the CDC and California Department of Public Health have deemed it safe to do so and have removed the six-foot spacing guidelines. Since they have overturned this requirement, we would be able to fit the students back into the classrooms and could abolish the AM PM cohorts, making it possible to increase the instructional time. We should be doing everything in our power to offer our students more with the time we have left this school year. Over 700 physicians, public health officials and numerous other specialists signed a letter urging our governor to take the recent science-based decision to immediately reopen our schools. Many more families would have chosen to bring their children back to campus if they were offered the standard school day hours or even a four-hour block of time. Could we plan to offer more in-person time once we come back from spring break? By upping our in-person hours, that would give us six weeks to be able to provide these students with more than they've received in over a year. I urge us as a district to not stop trying to better the situation for our students until they are back in the classrooms full-time. I'm hoping to hear how the district has this outlined in the pathway we have to get our students back to a full in-person education now that it has been made possible by the state of California to do so. I ask the governing board to take immediate action on figuring out the next step towards providing more of an in-person education. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Any other public comment on this agenda item? It doesn't look like it. So we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion. One thing I'd like to say is just thank you for, thank you to all the parents, teachers and staff, just for the, for the patience and flexibility the, the past week or so. I know everybody's getting used to the pickup and drop-off and everybody's been fantastically patient and understanding. So I just want to thank everybody for that. Any other board comments? Yeah, Jeremy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say one thing. I know AP tests are kind of on the horizon and making their way towards us. And it's my understanding that there are a number of teachers who have chosen to do in-person testing. And I also know that particularly for our upperclassmen that at least 50% have chosen to stay in distance learning for the rest of the semester. So it is concerning to me that their only option for a number of their tests is in person and it feels a little bit forced. So if that could be addressed and looked into in the coming weeks, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, Robin. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jeremy. You know, I, I first just want to thank again every single family member, student, employee, community member in Martinez for bearing with us as we've had to go through this. And we, we, we had the anniversary of when we took the special vote to shut down. That was an incredibly hard decision and it's, it's one that I had to make with former superintendent Camick and having students return or at least some beginning to return on March 11th, which doesn't aside as my birthday, was a wonderful experience. But then those of us that have March 11th as a birthday, we, we, we now are constantly reminded that that's the anniversary of the pandemic or the official shutdown of the pandemic. But the fact that we as a district were able to bring students back beginning on March 11th, I would hope would demonstrate to our community just how committed this board, the district office, every principal, every single classroom teacher, every staff member of this district has been to getting students back into classrooms as soon and as safely as possible. And I'm still frankly confused why we seem to hear from members of the community that imply that we're not moving towards that goal, even though we're quite literally doing it now. And we always have been working on getting students back in class as soon and as safely as possible. I hear these invectives like you're not following the science or X number of this and X number of that doctor signing a petition like great, I'm so happy that people are paying attention, but pay attention even more broadly, please. Mount Diablo isn't going to be fully returning for some time. West Contra Costa Unified isn't going to be returning until April 21st. I'm not disparaging those districts or their leadership or their employee groups. The fact is that they've had to make incredibly hard decisions. They're much larger districts than us. But those are our two neighboring school districts. And they're not even going to have kids back in classrooms for several more weeks yet. In one case, another month. We're doing incredibly well. If, if any single employee of the district is feeling like, gosh, could we be doing a better job? I mean, I don't think that's a fair question to ask ourselves. We've been doing as best as we possibly can with the hand we've been dealt and the ever-changing circumstances and guidelines and, and rules and mandates that have been coming down from Sacramento. They move the goalpost on us all the time. But I can say that my understanding has been since we voted to shut down school over a year ago, that the goal would be to get students back in classrooms as soon and as safely as possible with the goal of full return. And we've, we're doing it. We're doing it now. The, the, the feedback I'm getting from families in my community, those who have chosen to send their kids back, because in my community, more than half have not chosen to send their kids to, to participate in hybrid. But of, of, of people in my community who have sent their kids back in a hybrid fashion, they're grateful, they're ecstatic, the kids are happier, they're running around with big smiles on their faces when I see them in the afternoon. And I don't hear from anybody who believes that we aren't working on a goal of full return in the fall because we have of full return in the fall because we have been and we are. So I'm not trying to like react to things that people have said in public comment. That's really not my style. But I want people to understand this, at least for myself, that is the goal. And that's the goal that I've heard from district staff since March of 2020. I hope that clarifies for people, but sorry, I tend to rant on this stuff. It's just knowing how hard everybody has worked and how hard people are, are working now and continuing to work and how disruptive it has been for everybody. We're all absolutely doing our best to find some sort of normalcy in an abnormal time. Thank you.
Thank you Jonathan. Anybody else have? Any further discussion on this from the board?
Hey Jeremy, um, I think, I think maybe it's I'd like to see if we bring this back at our next board meeting, maybe instead of an update, we bring it as an action item. Or at least as for information to see if there are any possibilities of making changes to whether, I mean, I've, I've received a lot of the same communications that a lot of the other fellow board members have. I've also had concerns raised from some of our community about seeing what we can do to provide more educational minutes for our kids who are on distance learning. I think all of these are yeah, they're, they're always at the end, at, at the end of it, I think Jonathan nailed it. We want our kids to have access to a full the full breadth of, of what we understand is, is public education, which is a full day of school. And we're not there. And I think as we move towards there, are there things that we can do? Do they make sense in the, in, in the si- in the safety realm? Do they make sense in? You know, is it logical for us to change a schedule now with, with a month or so left to go? I, I don't know, but I think it's probably the right time to have that, that conversation in a way that the board can take further action on it the next time we come back. At least that's how, how I would feel. So I'd ask that when we do talk about our plans. And then to have more data behind that, I know there were some public comments about releasing information about who, you know, what's the demographics of the folks who, who are coming back. And we can speculate as to what that means or not, but I mean, the data's, the data is the data and it's something I think we can discuss as a board as well.
Okay. Any other or discussion on this agenda item? Doesn't look like it. So next up will be Amy Black and an LCAP update. Before, before we do that, I actually had a report myself. Courtney and I have had a chance to participate in the CSBA Legislative Action Week for the last the past week. So essentially what that is, is we got to meet with a number of our state assembly members and state senators and talk about education in California. And, and frankly, the primary topic was there's not enough money funded for education in California. And so we made that a big point of emphasis in our advocacy this past week with our, our state representatives. And the other topic that we, we really advocated about was just broadband, free broadband and wifi access for students. We, we all know that our students need wifi access, whether it's for distance learning or frankly for homework during the evenings on weekends. So those were the two big topics we talked about with our assembly members. And I will say that that we do have some, some folks who are really pushing for additional funding in Calif- in, in California. Some of them are frankly embarrassed by some of their colleagues that they, their colleagues just don't think that, that schools need more funding and it's frankly embarrassing for them. So Courtney, I don't know if you wanted to chime in and add anything else to that, but I did want to let everybody know that we were participating in those meetings.
Yeah, thank you Jeremy. The only thing I would add is, yeah, I, I, I came out of the meetings hopeful. You know, the way, we all know the way California laws are set up and the constitution. We, we have a steep hill to climb to get the funding that we need. And as, as Brenda said earlier, that, that frankly, many other states besides us have. So we're at a disadvantage, but I came out hopeful that some of our legislators get it and are, are working hard for us.
Okay, so I, I did want to throw that out there and next up will be 14.2 and Amy, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, President Janelle A, members of the board. And as requested, I'm bringing additional data related to the LCAP. So as I shared last time, I brought our English learner data. And so I just wanted to give you just snapshots. So typically what we do when we're running our LCAP committee. And then you, please cheer me and Deidre, you're, you're welcome to chime in because I know that you are also important members of our EAC. And I do want to say, actually, I've just been so impressed with the level of commitment and engagement to our students and to this process with all our stakeholders. We have representation from all our labor, labor groups as well as diverse backgrounds from our parents and our board members are present. So it's really, it's been a, a really fantastic journey. LCAP's not easy, especially this year because we're rewriting a brand-new LCAP, a three-year plan. So there's a couple of things that we're doing in tandem. So we need to do an annual update of our past three-year LCAP and review the action items as well as review the data. So that's the process that we've been in so far. We've had two meetings. We have our third meeting coming up this Wednesday and we will be reviewing our two final sets of data points. We'll be reviewing our college and career readiness data as well as our climate. And those data points are related to goals one and goal two in our current LCAP, which will expire this year. And then in our final meeting, so I will collect everybody's feedback and considerations and reflect on our discussions and also bring forward to our cabinet. We'll begin drafting our goals for the new, next three-year plan. And remember, keep in mind that LCAP is a document that we're required to complete by the state. So there are eight pri- state priorities that we are required to address in the state. And the data that I'm showing you tonight is connected to our California dashboard. So the dashboard is available to the public. Anyone can go on there. You would go to, to CA or CDE dashboard and you would look up our school district data, or you could also look up your individual school data. Now, we didn't have, we don't have dashboard data for 2020 because of shutdown. We did not have state testing in the spring. So the data that we're reviewing is two years old. So it's 2019 data that we are working off of. And then we are trying to incorporate some local data that we've been able to gather. I have a little bit more local data for our college and career that I'll be able to share this evening. That, that looks really promising. But it, it is an indicator for us to look at, you know, it's, we're in a continuous improvement model. All states in Cal- or all LEAs and all districts in California continue to operate through continuous improvement. We look at data, we review our programs and we make recommendation and that's all done through the LCAP process. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage for our data tonight. I'm going to go ahead and launch into college and career. Now, I would have to say that this is the newest indicator or relatively newest indicator from California. It's also the most touched, meaning that it continued, they could, the state continues to add additional qualifiers for this indicator as well as has adjusted the formula over the last, the last few years. So when it first came out, it was a four-year graduation cohort, then it moved to five years. So it's kind of a little bit of a moving target. And they do continue to add additional indicators. It's also the most complex. So as I mentioned before, I brought EL last time. We've reviewed academic, academic data in the past through our Sback data and that it's still 2019. I'm doing college and career tonight and then I'll also review the climate data and we'll be reviewing that in our LCAP committee this week. So college and career data, the indicator and, and in the dashboard, it encompasses our grad rate. And then what's called the college and career readiness indicator, and I'll explain what that means. And in that indicator are our career technical education pathway data, our AP class data, our grad rate, broad courses study, meaning seal of bi-literacy. I'll show you all that in a moment. Because it's the most complex, I want to give you a little bit of background about how the state identifies students that are what they consider prepared, approaching prepared or not prepared, prepared in this indicator. So this particular indicator on the California dashboard, you'll see the little color wheel again at the top. It tells us, so it's one way that we can look at our data, it tells us LEA means us, MUSD, and our schools, how they, how well they're doing in preparing students for likely success after they graduate. So their post-secondary success beyond MUSD. So here, I've been trying to go through quickly because there's a lot of ways that students can show they're prepared. So the smarter balance assessment, our state assessment, which doesn't help our current graduating students because they didn't take the test in 11th grade. So they have to look at other ways that they can be prepared or considered prepared by the state. So typically it's the 11th grade assessment. They score a level three or above in both ELA and math. Also, students that take AP exams, and Robin mentioned that, that's coming up. So students that take, score a three or higher on two, at least two AP exams are considered prepared by the state. We don't have IB programs, so I'm going to skip, skip that. College credit courses. So if students that are taking classes at DVC or, you know, dual enrollment for college credit, if they have two semesters or three quarters of coursework with a C minus or better, or if they're participating in CTE subjects where they issue college credit, then they're indicated as being prepared. Students with seal of bi-literacy. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this one because I know that there's been some questions about our EL data as well. So because we're not a dual enrollment or a dual immersion school district, meaning we do not offer schools or programs that have students that are mastering two or more languages through our system. So you'll hear about surrounding, often bigger districts will have maybe a Spanish immersion program or Mandarin immersion program that starts at the elementary school. We do not track mastery of multiple languages of our students until high school. So basically the seal of bi-literacy allows our students, they have to be proficient in English language. So they show that through Sback by getting a score of three or better. And also maintaining, I think it's at least a 2.0 in their ELA classes in high school. And then they also take a, a language. So meaning they have completed four years of a language. It could be any language, Spanish, Mandarin. Hopefully eventually American Sign Language. Right now we only have a two-year course, but it can also be a language that they take outside of our school district. If they take SAT II in a foreign language and pass it, or they pass an AP exam in that foreign language, then they are eligible for a seal of bi-literacy. And so that's something that is noted on their transcripts and their diploma. And then there's also like a seal or award that they get recognized at their actual graduation date. So that's the type of da- data that we collect in terms of identifying multiple languages. So our students leaving multilingual. So that's that, so I know that that's questions come up about how we're capturing additional data of our students that are English learners as well as possibly mastering another language. I'm, I'm going to skip the military science and then the UCC State University A to G requirements. So our high school, Alhambra High School moved to all A to G courses a few years ago in order to meet this criteria, in order to be recognized as prepared in college and career readiness indicator. So students need to complete A to G course, all the requirements. And that's listed and they go through that with their counselor as well as listed in the catalog for Alhambra High School. They need to receive a C minus or better plus an additional criteria in that little box on the bottom. So the box at the bottom will say, so if you are a student, you've complete, completed all your A to G course requirements with a C minus or better, you also need to either score a level three or higher in ELA and at least a level two in math, or the vice versa of that. A level three or higher on math, or at least a level two on ELA. So what's actually, when we look at smarter balance and students typically when they're taking the 11th grade courses, if they click a button at the end of the test that says, yes, submit my test results to the state, it will get they, and they pass those assessments, they get an automatic indicator that they are prepared for college and career. So it's definitely in our students' best interest and our, our, also just for our data collection for students to do that. Because then they also will, it'll indicate to the colleges that they're going to that they don't require any remedial courses in math or ELA. Also, if you have A to G and you've completed at least a semester at college credit or have college credit, then you are considered prepared A to G with at least one AP exam score of three or better. Or you've completed the CTE pathway. So that's how you can also be recognized. And then, or if you're on the career tech, technical education pathway, if you complete that pathway with a C minus or better, plus the capstone course and the additional criteria in the box that makes you prepared. So then you'll see, when we look at our data, what would indicate approaching prepared? I'm not going to go through that column. And then students are not prepared. I think having in mind what it is that our students need to have in order to be indicated as prepared is probably going to be most important when looking at this data tonight. Okay, so when you look at our color wheel, remember this is 2019 data. We don't have last year's. I do have last year's grad rate and AP score. So I'll be sharing that. So at that time, our students showed that 49% were, were considered prepared by the state of California. And there was, that was a decline at that time. That's all students at Martinez. At Alhambra, it was 61, so it's a little bit higher. 61% are considered prepared with a little bit of a decline. And 2% were prepared at Vicente. Now, I also want to keep, I want to, a caveat for this college and career. One of the indicators on there is the CTE pathway. And a major pathway for us was our CAD program. And at that time, when we got that indicator, we had actually lost our teacher. We had one teacher that was the capstone. And if, if students do not take the capstone class, then they are not considered, they would not be considered prepared. So a number of our students that were on that pathway were unable to complete it due to our last, uh, lack of staffing. And I know that that's something that Mr. Chamberlain has been working really hard to bring a qualified teacher back in order to reinstate that, that program because it's been very, very successful in the past. But that just also gives you an idea of how quickly like the data can be impacted by something as a, a loss of a staff mem- a staff member, especially with the size of our district being so small. So I'm going to go to the next one. So this just shows you, it's a lot of data. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I know you guys got this ahead of time and you're welcome to look at it. And we're going to spend more time at LCAP or you're, you're welcome to send me a note. But it basically, the way that you read this, it gives us a cohort, our graduating class in 2019. It shows the breakdown of our students within that total of 344, including, so it would be race and ethnicity as well as our student groups. And remember, our LCAP requires us to address the needs of our English learners, our socioeconomic disadvantage, students with disability, foster and homeless youth. So that's why they're broken out specifically. And then it'll show you overall percentage prepared. And remember, that was the overall number for Martinez, 49%. 16.9 approaching and 34% are indicated as not prepared at that time. And so then, this is just another way to look at the data. So of that 49, I was wanting to show how many of those are in each school. So we have Alhambra, Vicente, and then we have Brioni students. And of these students, what is the, you know, 100% of these students are, you know, in this cohort are prepared. What is the racial and ethnic breakdown as well as our student group breakdown? And remember, when you see an asterisk, it tells us that the subgroup or the student group is too small to report. And so we're not, in order to protect identities, we're not able to, we don't get a percentage from the state. So we wouldn't be able to share that. This is just another way, some people are different learners, right? Some people are more like, you want to see the numbers laid out. Other people want to see it, like, what does that mean in terms of like, we want to see it graphics. It's just all the same data, just different representation and how and how the breakdowns are again for prepared, so this is just another way to look at the data. And so this, this particular graph, it's a lot of information, but I like it because it actually tells me exactly where students are receiving that qualification of prepared, is it our CTE pathway, is it through our Smarter Balanced Assessment? So you can see all our students, it will tell us like where, kind of where it's weighted in terms of that overall percentage or indicator, it tells us where, and then it'll also tell us where we might want to spend some focused time, like I may say, hey, it's only 24% of our students are receiving a prepared indicator through AP testing or advanced placement, is this an area that we might want to take a closer look at and see what our course offering is and how we're supporting our students? You know, so we have A to G completion, is this a number that we can, you know, increase? So of that 100 and, I can't remember now, the number 160 something, you know, we have 100 of them that are, you know, receiving prepared through their A to G completion, you know, can we focus more on making sure that kids are taking the right courses that they need to take in order to get that indicator up? So this chart is really like great for us internally, for us to be able to ask those questions, and then when we work with the high school and with the teachers, how do we bump those numbers up? Another example would be our state SEAL of Bilinguality, so we had 18 students that year that qualified, which is fantastic, so. But is that, is there more opportunity for us to extend, especially if there are students that are taking languages that we don't offer outside, is that something that we want to explore and be able to help our students be multilingual? So those are all kind of questions that we ask through our program considerations and planning. So this is, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, this is just the same thing, it gives you a snapshot of, okay, so who are the percentage that are approaching? How close are they? You know, where could we give them additional support? I want to show the grad rate, this is a little bit of a celebration compared from 2018 to 2020 grad rate. So when we looked at our grad rate prior, we had a little bit of a decline, and we were in orange, and that was overall, and then there was a little bit of a decline at Alhambra, remember when we're talking about like 94 to 95, and then 1%, it quickly can adjust the color, so even though we have a pretty high graduation rate, if we're not maintaining or increasing, it can adjust our color. And then for Vicente, at that time, it was 69.8, and then I pulled, it's not as pretty, but I pulled the data for 2020 to give you a comparison, so our all-student rate last year increased 2%, so that's really positive. If we were gonna get a color, it would be green. For Alhambra High School, they also increased 2%, so they're at 96.67%. And if they were to get a color, that would be blue, remember, green and blue is where we want to be, so that's a point of celebration. And then Vicente is at maintain 69.7, so you know, continuing to look at ways that we can increase, and maintains always better than decline. So this one is a snapshot of our AP data, this data was a little bit, I think this one's older, no, it's 2018, 19, and at that time, but I want to show you this slide because it shows you five-year comparison, so this is the kind of data that we look at internally and thinking about ways that we can support our students. What I noticed and what I can highlight about this is that it's really positive, our AP student total number has increased over the last five years, so when we started collecting this data five years ago with the dashboard, 186 at that time, and now we're at 258, so it's really positive. And we also see an increase in the number of exams that are taken because that's also something that we want to look at, just because you're in AP class, students don't necessarily always take the exam, and cost can sometimes be a factor as to why they don't take the exam. So if that is something that is, you know, a barrier for students, we want to make sure that we can, if we need to offset costs, then that's a conversation that we have in our LCAP planning. And then you can also see that we also have an increase of students that are scoring three or above, remember, three is the marker for prepared. And then we're also seeing a percentage, total AP students with score of three or more increasing, we're at last, you know, 2019, it was 69%, and then last year it was 76.7, so that's really, really positive and a great trend for our AP programs. And then this is just kind of interesting, it's a little bit old, but, and so you have to remember that sometimes our indicators are a little bit backdated in Calpads as well as in our data quests, which are other data sources that we pull information from. But this is a good kind of data indicator for us to watch, we do survey students when they leave us to find out, you know, where they go, and are they graduating, are they going to a four-year university, are they going to two-year university? Are they not going to university? So this is just, again, it's a couple of years old, but it definitely is data that we want to continue to watch and see what the trends are for our students in order to, you know, if we need to increase support or planning for college or two-year college or partnerships, and that's something that we can then talk about and plan for, not only in our LCAP, but also in our meetings with our school sites. And I think, that's a lot, so remember Wednesday, we're having our final data review and reviewing past action items from our last LCAP. And then on April 17th, I will, you know, be, after I gather everyone's consideration information, I'm also gonna launch a parent, staff, and student survey to gather some more information from our community. And I will bring forth a draft goal or draft plan of the LCAP to our executive advisory council and committee for them to give feedback and additional comments and considerations for us as we work towards developing our final three-year plan that we will bring to all of you, the board, in June. And I just, I think I went ahead and outlined all that already, so that was a lot, I don't know if you have any questions for me, but thank you for bearing with me as I give you some, some background.
Thank you, Amy, that, that is a lot of information, and it reminded me that I have to do my LCAP homework the next couple evenings. Any, any questions from our board members? Doesn't look like it, we'll open it up for public comments. And remember, when I unmute you, just let us know who you are, you'll have a few minutes to talk. McKenna, you're up again, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
There you go, McKenna.
Hi, okay, so I am McKenna, I am a parent who is in your statistics, or my child is in your statistics of children that aren't doing well at the district at all. I received the graphs and stuff that you're presenting, everything is really general. What I would like to know is what exactly was the plan for these children to get them out of the position that they're in and try to move them towards academic success? I was able to see how much money you devoted to it, what I didn't see was where exactly did that money go and, and what your plan was? I mean, it didn't have to be a new one because we're going to do that, but I was reaching out to several people, the board members, I believe I reached out to you for that, and everything I'm getting is really general. I do know that if the school isn't required to do it, it might not be done, but I think it's really important for the parents of color, especially of the black and brown children, that we get to see some transparency on your efforts for our kids. They are not doing very well, I mean, you do your presentation and you really just kind of generalize and breeze over the seriousness of the situation, I mean, starting from school, that is, you know, that maps out people's destiny. So, I mean, having kids who have so much potential, I know they're not unlearnable, so it's important that we have transparency when it comes to the black and brown kids at this district. And again, I would really like to know what your plan actually was for these students, thank you.
Thank you, McKenna, is there any other public comment on this agenda topic? Okay, we have one more, Amy Scott-Slovick, go ahead. Oh, sorry, was my bad, go ahead, Amy.
Hi, thank you, yeah, this is Amy Scott-Slovick, I have four kids in the district, and I actually, first off, I want to say I completely agree with everything that Kenya just said. And I had a couple of just questions or thoughts, the first was, when we were looking at the, you know, when they were looking at the percentage of kids, African-American, Hispanic, and then looking at the numbers of how many were prepared, I'm trying to see if that is compared out of, out of that, that total population of, of those kids, like how many Hispanic children were the ones that were prepared at such and such level? Or was that just an overall lower number because they were talking about the, how many, how many they are as a total sample inside the district, I'm not sure if that makes sense. And then the other thing I wanted to know about specifically was what they're looking at for helping children with special needs for becoming more prepared to be college-bound. Because I haven't really seen things so much other than just what's in their IEPs right now, I have three kids with special needs, and I'm just wondering if there's anything specific from the LCAP money that goes towards working with kids with learning disabilities, et cetera, what, what is different that's being done to help those kids, um, thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Any other public comments on this agenda item? Does not look like it, so we'll bring you back to the board for further discussion, any other, any further discussion from our board? Good, Courtney.
Yeah, Amy, I, I read the graphs as the, when you showed, like, for example, the percentage of African-American students, that was the percentage of their total, not the percentage of the total, I think that's what the previous commenter was getting at. And I have to say, I think both of the commenters have good points. I, I think it's great that we have increase in AP students, but I, I don't have, I didn't look at the data from prior LCAPs to know where, if there are improvements in some of the areas that seems like really need improvement, so. And, and that's, that's my bad, so I know you guys are all working hard on the LCAP committee, but I, I think that, you know, I think maybe making that data more available or maybe easier digestible to some people would be really helpful.
Okay, any other comments, discussion from, from board, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Amy, this presentation, I remember from a few meetings back that we asked you to kind of come to us, like you said at the beginning of the presentation, with, you know, one area each time. And so I just want to clarify because I know there is some comment, the purpose of tonight was not to really say, it was really just to data information, not, and then, you know, because there's still obviously a lot of work to, to do to determine what we need to do to address some of the shortcomings in certain groups that we need to be supporting, am I correct in that, that this was really just meant to be the data?
Yes, that's correct, so I, this was in response, a response to the board request for me to bring more data since we have, are writing a new three-year LCAP, so you know, so yeah, so the, the focus and response to last meeting and tonight was just to share the data with you.
So if there's I didn't want folks to think that that that's just it, and then now it's done, because certainly there is more work to do, and then of course, you know, planning for how we're going to address
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
If I could just jump in as well, and so this is something, while, while the data is old, it is our data, and we're not making excuses for it, we're moving on, we know we have areas of growth for sure, so that's something that we discuss at the cabinet level, at the administrative level, at the teacher level, we work with data, we're looking at, you know, quick feedback, quick turnaround, how our kiddos are doing, when they're not doing well, how do we intervene immediately? So that we're not just waiting for 2019 data to come and help us and let us know that we need to do better by our students. And so throughout this LCAP process, we have specific metrics that we have to say each year, we want to grow by this percentage, and if we're not meeting that percentage, we have to be pretty clear about how, why we missed our target. And so that's, again, more information to come, we are looking at our data, we're talking about areas of improvement, and especially there's a significant focus on our subgroups that we want everybody in those blues and greens, like Amy has said, we need our kiddos to move forward, and so all staff is concerned about that and addressing that as we move forward.
Thank you, any other board comments, questions? Okay, we get to move on to agenda item 15, which is public comments. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. Additional time is allowed at the end of the meeting if there was not enough time to speak during public comments, so. If you have public comments, go ahead and raise your hand. Doesn't look like we have any public comments. Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item 16. Agenda item 16 is the Consent Calendar. Approval of the Consent Calendar means that all items listed here under are adopted by a single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consenting calendar and voted upon separately. Julie, do we have any changes to the consent calendar this evening?
We do not.
Okay, let's. Any questions from the board about the consent calendar? We'll open it up for a public comment, any public comment? Doesn't look like it, let's bring you back to the board for action, we have a motion?
Move to approve, consent calendar.
Robin, student vote?
Aye.
Full board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, objections? Okay, now we get to move on to agenda item 17.1, which is our ratification of contract between California School Employees Association, or CSEA, and the Martinez Unified School District, and this is Stacy presenting.
Good evening, CSEA and MUSD have reached an agreement for the 2021 school year that would raise our minimum wage in order to comply with the California Minimum Wage Law that was effective January 1st, 2021. We also agreed to remain status quo for benefits for 2021 school year, and we made some changes to our safety article. MUSD would like to take this opportunity to thank CSEA for working collaboratively with us through this ratification process, and tonight we are asking the board for your consideration and possible approval. Thank you.
Any, any questions from the board? Okay, doesn't look like, doesn't, sorry, doesn't look like it, we can open it up for public comments. Is there any public comments on agenda item 17.1? Okay, we'll bring you back to the board for further discussion and actions, or any other discussion from our board? Okay, this is an action item, so do we have a motion? Motion to approve. Okay, and Robin, I think you're out of this one, so full board, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Excellent, motion passes, thank you, Stacy, thank you, Stephanie, is there anything you wanted to say, Stephanie? Okay, now we get to move on to item 17.2, which is a review of school plans for student achievement, this is an information item from Amy Black, go ahead, Amy.
Thank you, so this is information item, and all the plans are listed for your review, they're quite extensive. I want to thank our school site councils from all the school sites as well as our administrators. That's, you know, a big chunk of their responsibility as a school site council member is to review the school site plan, to review the goals, look at data, and then it also to ensure that it's aligned with the LCAP. So something that I would, wanted to point out of what's a little bit different than if you've been experienced in reviewing school plans before with the school closure and, you know, pandemic and shutdown for COVID-19, our plans do look a little bit different than they typically do, and there had to be some reallocation of our fundings at some of our schools, especially our Title I schools, because typically we Um, because typically we would have additional help or, you know, on-campus support. And since our students were not on campus, they've had to look at ways that they need to adjust their spending just for this year. Um, so this plan is actually for this school year, the two thousand um, twenty, twenty-one school year. Um, which I know seems kind of strange because we're a little bit, you know, we're half, almost finished with the school year, but um, that's the way that it landed with uh, you know, school closures. Um, so just keep that in mind and the plans, there are notations through that that indicate that there have been some adjustments in terms of typical data collection or survey um, or goals or spending because of school closures. And then our intention is that once LCAP is approved or hopefully approved over the summer, then we'll start to work with our schools and school site councils to realign our site plans, our school site plans with the new LCAP goals and look at funding in order to support um, like any changes that are made um, at that time. I didn't know if there was any specific questions on plans. Um, once you review them or any clarification that I can provide.
Um, Amy, I have a, want to comment. I, I mean, for, for members of the public who have not seen these plans, I mean, these things are seventy, ninety pages long. And so a lot of work and time and effort goes into these things. Um, so I just want to thank everybody who, who has spent time working on these documents. And are these available on our website, Amy, somewhere?
They are. So they're linked in the board agenda. Um, and then once they're approved, um, then I'll have them uploaded on our district website as well as they'll be available at individual school sites, but right now they're only available through the board agenda.
Okay, so members of the public, if you want to take some time and, and read these documents, they are on, on the board agenda. So you can just click on the link and uh, you know, set aside a few hours because it takes some time. Do we have any other board questions uh, for Amy? Okay, doesn't look like it. We'll open it up for public comments at this time. Any public comments on agenda item seventeen point two? Okay, doesn't look like it. Amy, it looks like we're bringing this back uh, for the next meeting. So uh, we'll deal with that then. Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda item seventeen point three, which is a revised classified job description uh, information technology support. And Stacy gets to present this one.
All right, thank you. So we have recently received a retirement in the technology department. And with this vacancy, the district has carefully considered the needs of students and staff along with our ever-changing and involving, evolving needs of technology in our world, in our district. So I do want to say a very special thank you to David Wildley, uh, the coordinator, coordinator of technology and his department um, for working to define those goals. So with students returning to hybrid, um, we did meet with CSEA this last week to discuss potential changes within the existing job description, um, which you have uh, seen this evening. Um, it's attached to our agenda. We have reached a tentative MOU with CSEA to change um, parts of this job description and the title to better align uh, with the needs of the district. So tonight we are bringing this forward to you as an informational item. However, we are also asking for your consideration for possible action. Um, do you have any questions that David or I could answer for you this evening?
Do we have any questions from the board about this topic? Any?
Would you be able to, just so the public can also hear, just maybe highlight some of the key changes made to this position?
Absolutely. David, do you want to address that?
Uh, yes, uh, basically the key, we kept the core elements of the original position. And we um, just redefined uh, really won the support, a little bit of the support for um, the network engineer uh, in that position's absence. So if that position's out, the uh, position is to be its backup. Also, uh, before the uh, the description was written, the original description was written, we did not have um, uh, Sherpa Desk, which is our um, our um, support ticket um, database. And so we included that uh, within the position responsibilities. Additionally, uh, because there is a networking and server component, um, we wanted to add to the um, education requirements, a bachelor's of uh, computer science. Uh, we did keep the two-year um, uh, experience uh, within a like environment, IT environment uh, with that. Um, but we did want to kind of emphasize that this is a um, a, you know, a networking level job and that uh, there are requirements that are going, going to go along with it. But I think the biggest thing is the name change. Um, the previous position um, was not, was not well described, did not well describe the position. And this with the, the Internet Technology Support Specialist, uh, it really kind of encompasses the entire position and kind of is a broader name uh, going forward.
Thanks, David. Any other board questions? Okay, we can open up uh, for public comments, agenda item seventeen point three. Is there any public comments on seventeen point three? Um, it doesn't look like it. We'll bring it back. Stephanie, was there anything you wanted to add to, to the discussion? So this is a, this, this is, it looks like it's a possible action item. So if we got three shakes of the head, we can take some action on it. I'm shaking my head. Deidre's shaking her head.
I'm shaking my head.
Okay, so everybody's shaking their head. So do we have um, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, um, I don't think Robin gets to vote on this one. Sorry, Robin. Um, uh, full board, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any oppose? Any absentions? Okay, um, thank you very much, Stacy. We got, got that taken care of and we don't need it on our next agenda. Um, agenda item eighteen is additional comments from the public. We don't need that tonight. So move on to nineteen with comments from our superintendent and board members and future agenda items. And we'll go around the room. We'll just call on folks. Robin, do you have anything you wanted to add tonight?
I'm not really different from what I said earlier, just that we're looking forward to our transition to a new schedule for everyone who's looking forward to coming on campus and I'm looking forward to it. I think it'll go really well and I appreciate all the collaboration. Um, but that is, has gone on and the communication and keep an eye out for further communication. So we're prepared to go.
Excellent. Thank you, Robin. Jonathan, do you have anything else tonight?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, Deidre?
Uh, I just wanted to uh, kind of echo what a lot of people have said. Really exciting to get the elementary kids back. Uh, or onto a different schedule. Uh, I just really appreciate all of our, all of the staff of this district, their flexibility, their real, their willingness to, to chip in and and the creative thinking. I mean, we are small district and so to change momentum in some ways um, is easier, but it's also more difficult because we just have fewer people uh, at the oars. And, and I know our folks at the district office uh, have just been rowing and rowing and rowing as well. So thank you, everyone, for, for all that you do. I'm really looking forward um, to, to moving forward. And, and also a shout out to our food services and everyone who's supporting them. I, I mean, it's the little things that, that are, that are helpful. Um, but the fact that we are providing multiple meals a day uh, for our kids uh, in in a huge way. Um, you know, hundreds of meals are getting delivered into our community and uh, and I just I, I'm really proud that we're able to do that. And I just really want to thank the folks who are making that happen for us. So, uh, so thanks.
Great, Deidre. Courtney, anything?
No, thank you.
Annie?
Um, I just had one. I know we've discussed this a couple of times and it came up on our agenda last time. Um, I just wanted, uh, for a future agenda item, I know it's kind of on people's radar, but it's come up a couple of times, the community service requirements for our seniors next year. So I just, it's still, it's still on our minds. We haven't forgotten about it. Um, it's, you know, obviously our staff has been fully dedicated to our reopening plans. So um, but I am looking forward to having that on an agenda um, coming up pretty soon here. So that was all I had.
I don't think I have anything this evening. Um, Julie, do you have anything else?
I do. I, I have a, I have a couple of things. Um, uh, first off, want to congratulate um, our uh, sports program. And we had a very successful football game and cheerleading event last Friday night. Um, when I talk about the continuous changes from the state, um, we had some concerns that our cheerleaders would not be able to cheer last Friday. Um, and thank goodness, the CDPH changed guidelines. Um, there has also been a concern about band performing in the future and it looks like um, they are going to be changing their guidelines yet again. And it looks like band can perform this Friday night as well. More details are coming, everyone. So that's really exciting uh, information. Um, in regards to changing information as well, we are uh, closely watching the State Board of Education. Um, there's some new information about testing coming forward. Um, these are our state tests. The, the State Board of Education is attempting to get a waiver um, for testing. And not that we won't test, but a little bit um, a type of testing that will allow us some more flexibility to potentially choose between using the um, California Sback assessment or local measures. Um, we attend a webinar on the twenty-fourth to find out more details. So get ready, exciting information about testing's coming our way. Um, again, wanted to mention and just reiterate that we are looking at our promotion and graduation ceremonies coming forward. So more TDA details coming along those lines. Um, want to ask folks too, um, we definitely are in need of substitute teachers. So if anybody who's watching ever thought about becoming a substitute teacher, come on, give us a call. We'd love to have some folks. And we also have a number of classified positions. Um, again, food service, para educators. If folks are interested, we would love to have you. And then finally, I, I want to um, bring, bring forth a statement and um, in, in light of recent and continuing events uh, regarding targeted attacks against the Asian-American community, both nationally and in our own state. Um, I feel it's our responsibility to clearly denounce any violence, harassment, racism, or hate demonstrated towards Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. As a school district, we are here to support our students and families at all times. As a community of learners, we are always trying to help our students by teaching tolerance, inclusion and understanding. And I want um, students to know or families to know if they need support during this time, please contact your schools. And we are here to support you a hundred and ten percent um, and, and deal with any issues we might have. Um, I would like to bring forth a resolution um, at our next board meeting. And I think um, I'd like to just read the um, CSBA president, Suzanne Kitchens wrote an article today. And I just want to just kind of read a little bit about what she wrote that I thought was very poignant and, and basically said, "The battle, the battle against racism is older than America itself and schools cannot win it alone. We can, however, play a decisive role in creating conditions of inclusion and respect on our campuses and root out discrimination wherever it occurs. We will need to reexamine and reinforce our commitment to positive school cultures, anti-bullying, restorative justice, and how the study and appreciation of many cultures that form the American fabric contributes to a richer, safer and more respectful society." And I think that was very well said. And again, we are here to support our community members. So just wanted to leave with that and, and thank everybody. Again, thank everybody for the reopening. We're looking forward to our kiddos coming back at the secondary level and we appreciate everybody. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And with that, um, we are done this evening. So we'll be back. Uh, our next regular meeting is April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And I want to wish everybody a good evening and stay safe out there. And we can adjourn at eight fifteen PM tonight. Thank you so much, everybody.